Perfect timing. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July 25th, 2017 meeting, 5:30 meeting in Titusville City Council. I'll call it to order. We have a quorum. Is there a pastor in the house that would like to say an invocation? I see none. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is special recognitions and presentations. Employee of the Month, Mr. City Manager, if you will.
Yes, sir. We'd like to recognize the employee of the month for May 2017, Mr. Jerry Garrett from Field Operations and Water Resources Department as employee of the month. And a special thanks to Jerry's family, loved ones and workers that are here to watch this recognition ceremony. And Jeff, would you come forward, please, and do the honors?
Good evening. Jerry Garrett was employed by the city of Titusville for 19 years. He was the water distribution foreman for the Field Operations Division. Over the years, he held a variety of positions ranging from service worker 1 and 2 to equipment operator 2 and 3 to crew leader 1 and 2 and eventually foreman. Jerry gave energy, commitment, and inspiration to his staff and to others with whom he worked. I can think of no other individual that exemplified more dedication, devotion, loyalty, selflessness, and a positive, hard-working attitude. He was always the first to volunteer for any job-related activity or department-sponsored event such as the annual city picnic. He was always willing to volunteer his time and service to help any of his peers or subordinates with any work-related activity even if it didn't fall under his purview. As a water distribution foreman, Jerry demonstrated a high degree of professionalism, leadership, and quality of work performed. He possessed a diversity of talents that were well utilized for various projects. Jerry took a lot of pride in his work, and it showed. Jerry had a can-do attitude that was very contagious and rubbed off on his crew. He maintained a high level of work ethic and held his crews to a high level of standards. He never asked anything of them to do something he himself would not do or has not done. He was a great teacher, trainer, and a very valuable asset to the city of Titusville. Jerry was such a strong person through and through, from character, personality, and presence. Jerry was living proof of how fine a person can be. He was a good boss to the people he was in charge of, devoted father to his children, a loving fiance, excuse me, son and brother. He was also a good friend to many of us and a great coworker. The character of life he lived might be summed up in a few words. He was honest, he was loyal, and he was giving. Albert Einstein said, "The value of a man should be seen in what he gives and not in what he is able to receive." In one word, Jerry was a man who gave. He gave much to his work, to his family, and to his friends. One of the many great qualities that Jerry bestowed upon us was his devotion to help others. He was always willing to make time to provide us his knowledge, his skills, and himself to take care of our needs. This characteristic of Jerry shows us a sense of care he had, which we will remember and miss, a value that we should try to imitate, to honor his memory, and make this world all that much better. We were all very lucky to have had him in our lives, and as much as he will be missed by us all, he will remain with us all every day as long as we can remember. We love and miss you, Jerry. Thank you.
Well done, sir.
Thank you.
And to his family, on behalf of the city of Titusville, thank you for your son's service to the city, and we're sorry for condolences for your loss. Thank you.
Mayor, I think we have a couple people that would like to speak.
Sure.
And then we'd like to get the family together for a presentation.
Okay.
Hi, yes, thank you.
Your name?
Sorry on...
Name, please.
Oh, sorry. My name is Cole Helms. I'm the son of Catherine Cheney, the recently deceased Jerry's fiance.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak on such short notice. I'm here to formally ask the city of Titusville for a favor to City Manager Scott Larrise, Assistant City Manager Tom Abbott, Mayor Walt Johnson, Vice Mayor Matt Beringer, and City Council Members Sarah Stockel, Dan Diesel, and Jo Lynn Nelson. Ever since the memorial service for Jerry a few months ago, I have personally been planning on sending thank-you cards to the emergency EMTs, the first responders, campers nearby, caretakers, and liaisons who not only helped Jerry but my mother during that time over in Phoenix. My mother, in addition to my idea of sending the cards, she came up with the idea to ask the city of Titusville for an official letter to send to the EMTs, you know, sort of certification, as you will, showing that Jerry worked for the city of Titusville and that as an employee he was valued by more than his family but by an entire city. So during our time, when the incident happened, my mother, not only helped by the EMTs and campers, was also given a personal liaison who set her up in a cabin overnight, gave her a hotel for a week, gave me and his sister Felicia contact information, allowing us to schedule flights and shuttle pathing to the nearby city. It saved me, Felicia, the entire family, and my mother the hassle of having to deal with this huge struggle that we did, that we would've if they wouldn't have contacted and worked with my mom during the situation. And just because of that, and that alone, as well as other aforementioned items, I would really, really like to request you, from my perspective and from the Garrett family, the Helms family, and the rest of the Cheney family, to, as I said, formally send a city of Titusville signed and stamped letter to the EMTs. We have our contact information, so if accepted, feel free to contact my mother via email, and I can set you up with the contact information. And thank you for your time and listening to what I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Manager, will you arrange that?
Absolutely, sir. It'd be honored to do so.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I could have you and Sean, Jeff, and what I'd like to do is get the family down in front of the dais here and surrounded by loved ones, family, and friends, and to give the certificate with pictures. So I know it'll be a big crowd, but I'd really like to get everybody in this picture. Mayor, if I could have you come up, present here to the family?
This is a plaque that says, "City of Titusville Employee of the Month, May 2017. This certificate is awarded to Jerry Henry Garrett, Jr. in recognition of your valuable contributions to the city of Titusville. Signed by William S. Larrise, City Manager." I don't know who should ice man out. I think you should. I'm so sorry for your loss. If you'd like to take that. Yeah, we're gonna take a picture of that and you. Thank you very much, and again, I'm so sorry.
And just as a final note, not only with the award, the city has also got us the tree that you see in the back there. It's a white magnolia tree, and that along with a special plaque will be placed at Field Operations in the center island that we have in memory of Jerry. So what we're gonna do is when we plant the tree, we'll have a plaque there, and we're gonna put a little park bench for the employees to come by and remember and see them. So you guys are always welcome to come by and see them. Okay? Absolutely.
Next item, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Ms. Abby Johnson from St. John's Water Management District will be presenting the city with a grant award towards the upcoming South Street Basin Baffle Box Project. The water quality project was awarded for $110,000 from the district's fiscal year 2017 18 district-wide cost share program. Abby, welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be back. I know I was here briefly a few months ago. I'm just here to extend our thanks on behalf of the St. John's River Water Management District. Thank you for applying. We appreciate having partners that are focused on improving the water quality and quantity and water conservation within our district, and we appreciate you taking the time to invest your dollars and partner along with us to move forward, to improve those core missions that we focus on. So I won't take up too much of your time. We appreciate you and your staff that are fantastic. You've been working alongside one of our project managers for a few projects now, right? And so we really appreciate the city of Titusville and everything that you're doing. And with that, I'd like to present you with this check.
Come down there and... Nice check. Worth coming down. He doesn't trust politicians. Next item, sir.
Yes, in our continuing spotlight of our directorates, tonight we'd like to present the Community Development Spotlight, and Ms. Bisaka is there to go ahead and let her roll.
I would be delighted to preface this, but I haven't seen it, so I'm going to enjoy it along with the rest of you. But I just want to say that I'm the person you see the most here, but believe me, it is the staff and crew of community development that makes all of this work. And the work that you see every day, all the wonderful things that are happening in the development community, is because this group is making it so. And so if you would like to roll that, great.
The Community Development Department team works together to provide a wide range of services related to housing and social services, land development and redevelopment, natural resources, and economic development. As a group, the members remain focused on not only the big picture but also the individuals we serve every day. Economic development activities within the city have been very successful in the past year. Working in conjunction with other North Brevard economic development partners, the city has seen the successful recruitment of a number of new industries. To ensure the city has skilled production workers, the city created nine scholarships for the Certified Production Technician Online Program through the Economic Development Commission and Eastern Florida State College Foundation. In February, the Economic Development Director developed an outreach program marketed to over 3,000 members of the Space Coast Realtors Association. Community Development subsequently held a seminar to showcase information the city has to offer and will repeat the seminar again in the fall. The city coordinates a monthly trail group meeting to facilitate Titusville becoming a trail town. Members include the Titusville Area Chamber of Commerce, Greater Titusville Renaissance, Brevard Parks and Recreation, and our department staff. Our Planning Department serves as a liaison to several boards and commissions, including the Planning and Zoning Commission, Historical Preservation Board, and the Board of Adjustments and Appeals Commission. Throughout the past year, the planning staff processed five conditional use permits, two comprehensive plan map amendments, one development agreement, four rezonings, four easements, and public right-of-way vacates. In October 2016, our staff completed an 18-month review and update to the city's Land Development Code, which was last updated in 1960. This massive effort required the assistance from several other city departments to complete. The Community Development's GIS analysts handle a number of different electronic tools including rezoning requests, small-scale amendments, online zoning maps, future land-use maps, atlas sheets, story maps, park and recreation amenities, FEMA maps, development applications. The staff and public are now able to view, search, and create maps using the online portal developed by the GIS team by simply going to the city's website at titusville.com. The Natural Resources Department coordinates the environmental programming and permitting activities among various city departments, including planning, development review, public works, solid waste, parks and recreation, and water and stormwater utilities. The department develops and reviews comprehensive plan policies, land development regulations, and ordinances relating to natural resources within the city, such as the 150th Anniversary Tree Program. The department's staff also serves as the city's liaison to the Titusville Environmental Commission, a seven-member citizen advisory board which provides recommendations to city council on issues relating to the environment. The Neighborhood Services Department oversees over $600,000 of federal and state grant programs. These grants provide capital improvements in low-income residential areas throughout the city such as sidewalks, street paving, street resurfacing, code enforcement measures, and assisting homeowners with minimum housing repairs. Last year, the grant programs accomplished many goals, including the elimination of substandard infrastructure by paving two dirt streets and resurfacing three existing streets. They also provided funding to local public service providers serving low-income residents such as senior nutrition programs, early childhood development services, counseling services, domestic violence services, drug abuse programs, and emergency housing and homeless services. During fiscal year 1516, these agencies assisted 141 citizens, enabling parents to work or look for work and promoting self-sufficiency and life skills. The department also assisted 17 homeowners with repairs to their homes through the Housing Rehab Program. Neighborhood Services Department also manages the Harry T. Moore Social Service Center, which disseminates information to approximately 2,600 citizens a year on services available throughout the community. Over 1,000 community meals were hosted here last year, and after Hurricane Matthew in October of 2016, the department invited and collaborated with FEMA to establish a disaster recovery center for all of Brevard County, serving over 500 citizens and relocating five families to new housing after their homes were damaged. The Community Redevelopment Planner, under the direction of the Community Redevelopment Director, coordinates the activities of the Community Redevelopment Agency. The past year saw the grand opening of the Downtown Welcome Center operated in conjunction with the Titusville Area Chamber of Commerce. The center was recently designated as a Florida Certified Travel Information Center and serves as the home of the Coast-to-Cost Bicycle Company. In addition, the Redevelopment Planner and Community Development Engineer developed and coordinated the first phase of a wayfinding plan, placing signs throughout the downtown area. This year, staff also completed the mandated annual report and provided copies to all funding agencies with help from the city clerk's office. The Development Services Division serves as the central point of contact for all new residential, commercial, and industrial development and redevelopment projects. Engineering reviews and inspections are conducted on all new proposed developments, site plans, landscape plans, grading plans, drainage studies, and traffic reports to ensure that everything complies with the technical requirements of the city's land development regulations. This past year, the city reduced the review period for plans to 14 days. Staff also reviews and assists with variance requests that go before the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, which meets monthly. In a coordinated effort with community relations, the Quarterly Titusville Talking Points presents the most current compilation of the projects being reviewed and inspected by the Development Services staff. A few highlights this past year include... In 2016, our staff led the county in the Simplified, Nimble, and Accelerated Permitting Program, or SNAP, recertification issued by the Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast. This certification is earned by local governments who develop streamlined permitting processes for building and site permitting. In addition to site plan review and permitting, the Development Services Division oversees the administration and issuance of business tax receipts for all new and existing businesses in the city, issuing 203 new business tax receipts last year. The Building Division reviews all building construction plans and permit applications. They also issue certificates of occupancy and provide all permits for construction, redevelopment, and building improvement projects, including fences and signs. The implementation of online permitting has greatly improved the customer service experience, issuing 3,224 permits in 2016, an increase of 23 percent. With the addition of two new positions and the restructuring of staff responsibilities, the Building Department was able to control the large increase of inspections last year. The Building Department recently assumed responsibility of the floodplain administration for the city. As a result, three staff members have now become nationally certified floodplain managers. An important part of our efforts to improve customer service has been our Lean Six Sigma projects. Eight staff members have earned their Green Belt certifications, two staff members are working toward their certifications, and one staff member is scheduled for training in the near future. In addition, five members of staff are Yellow Belts. Projects completed within the last year include the Building Permit Improvement Process, Phase 1 of the Land Development Code Update, and shop drawing review. New Lean Six Sigma projects include business tax receipts classifications and enhanced GIS coordination and utilization. With the support of council and the city's administration, the Community Development Department is committed to continuous improvement, to realize the best possible outcomes for our customers, and to support the development of the city.
The last part of that were the credits, so you missed all of the Swedish and the mooses, and I apologize for that. Send you a copy on paper if you'd like, but they promised me I couldn't do it live.
You can if you'd like. We'd enjoy seeing it, I'm sure. Thank you. Yes.
Gary and the Donut.
We wanted to highlight what we do best, what we're known for here in City Hall.
Any other questions for Ms. Bisaka? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Manager, item D.
Yes, sir. I've got two certificates. If I could have you present to Councilmember Jo Lynn Nelson and Councilmember Sarah Sokol for the completion of the 2017 Advanced Institute of Elected Municipal Officials.
You have to go, too.
Come on, Sarah.
I'm coming. All the help, progress. Are you so late? Do we match? Yeah.
Okay. So we put law in the middle?
Yeah. Okay, this is my better son. Oh, wait. Are you doing one at a time?
No, it's all right. We'll do it all at once, but...
What'd you learn with that thing?
Stand still for a minute, okay? Jo Lynn, congratulations on the completion of the education in this case. I took this about 11 years ago, I guess, and I remember learning a whole bunch then.
It was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jim. Jim.
Okay.
Jim.
TVs are out.
That's why I was acting up.
TVs are back.
Sarah, did you pass?
I passed.
Oh, good. With all your education, you better pass. Congratulations and thank you for completing, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's rather neat looking.
I'm gonna get in the middle because that was just that.
Yeah.
Are we gonna show this off?
Yes, absolutely. You worked for it.
I know.
Let's give them a round of applause. Item E.
Yes, sir. For the record, I'd like to read the letters of appreciation that have been received at City Hall for the following employees. From our Community Development Section, Eddie Galindo, Natural Resources Planner; Rose Coney, Program Specialist; KB Ufoso, Community Development Engineer; Brad Parrish, Planning... Coning, Program Specialist; KB Ufoso, Community Development Engineer; Brad Parrish, Planning Manager; and Trevor Treffagan, Senior Planner. From our Fire Department, Connor McBride, Firefighter EMT. From our Police Department, Jason Hanson, Police Officer; and Amy Matthews, our Public Affairs Coordinator.
Thank you. Next item is petitions and requests. Do I have anybody that would like to speak? I see no one. So with that, we have completed our tasks, so I will... Unless council has anything else they'd like to talk about in this part? No? Okay. I declare it turned.